Saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, the motion passes. Item three, recognitions.
Ma'am Chair, I'm staying in for Ms. Hope tonight to recognize our employee of the month. And I will ask her to come forward in just a moment, but I'd like to read a few of the things that have been written and said about her to recognize our Edgewcombe County Public Schools Employee of the Month for February. This month, Edgewcombe County Public Schools is proud to recognize Mrs. Felicia Danza as Employee of the Month for February. Ms. Danza brings an unparalleled level of creativity and enthusiasm to her classroom, incorporating engaging hands-on learning experiences such as interactive escape rooms to make lessons come to life. Her passion for education extends well beyond the classroom as she continuously seeks ways to support students and staff alike. Her contributions are far-reaching. She stepped up as a backup bus driver, taking on the role of tennis coach, and led the Schools' United Way campaign, all while maintaining her dedication to student success. Going above and beyond, she even volunteered to drive a group of students to NC State for STEM camp, ensuring they had access to valuable learning experiences. Ms. Danza's unwavering commitment, adaptability, and team-first mentality truly set her apart. She is not only an exceptional educator, but also an inspiring leader and role model for both students and colleagues. Please join us in celebrating Ms. Danza for her outstanding contributions to Southwest Edgewcombe and Edgewcombe County Public Schools. If she could come forward? And Ma'am Chair, just may I add one more thing. She'll be receiving this as well. We also want a special thanks to State Farm Agent Greg Sussens for sponsoring this award. He'll be providing Ms. Danza with a gift card to a local business. So, congratulations.
Congratulations. So that ends, oh, that ends our recognition.
We're still on with...
With this.
Music.
Oh, we got it too.
Yes ma'am.
Who's the speaker for?
I am tonight.
You gonna do that?
Going to introduce everybody.
Oh, you doing everything.
Yes ma'am. So, very special recognition tonight. I think, well, I know it has been a, certainly something that's been celebrated in Edgewcombe County Public Schools is the idea of the arts. And just a couple of weeks ago, we had superintendent's art night where we recognized some special students and art teachers across our school district. We are trying to build up the arts and create the arts as something that students can participate in, not only on their own, but as part of school. And we have a great number of students within our school district who are very talented. As we have talked about trying to increase that opportunity to build student talent in our school district, we've had a lot of discussions about expanding that. And this past fall, we had a discussion about expanding the band and chorus programs at our middle schools, which is sort of a feeder program into our high schools. And we talked internally about that. But then the conversation went beyond that to the community. And I'm gonna let him come up and talk a little bit about his contribution, but we've received some community donations. One in the neighborhood of about $60,000 to support the creation of a middle school band and chorus program that we're currently working on logistics for that. I wanted to especially recognize some of the people who have made that happen and are making such a strong community commitment to support the arts and band chorus programs within our community. I think there's a, I know there's a very strong link between the development of the arts, band, chorus, and ultimately to academic success and brain development. And that's critically important for our students, and we believe that our students should have that opportunity. So, I'm going to introduce a few people who have made this happen, like to ask them to come to the mic and talk a little bit about their contribution, maybe why they did that. The first gentleman I will call to the mic is Reverend Stephen Mazingo from Calvary Episcopal Church, who has helped spearhead a lot of this for us, and I'd like to have him just talk a little bit about the contribution, what it means to him in representing Calvary Episcopal Church. Thank you.
Thank you. It is a great joy to be here tonight, and I want to say that we would not be able to support this program without your forward-thinking and creative thinking, Dr. Bryant. So, I want to recognize that, how grateful I am that you made this a priority. Music and the arts are central, and education are central to the mission of Calvary Episcopal Church. Music has been a vital part of our worship and our community since the very beginning of Calvary Church. And it is with great joy, as I said, that we are able to partner with you and use the resources that have been entrusted to us over the past century, which has built up in what is called the Rector's Discretionary Trust, to be able to share those resources with our community. Education is also important to Calvary, and there are many individuals who have been a part of Calvary Episcopal Church who have shown this. Peggy Taylor, who ran a school for special needs children at Calvary Church. Happy Cox. Lloyd Owens, and many other people who have made this a priority of our church. So, we are very glad to be able to support this. I have an additional check for you tonight as well, from two of our parishioners, Bob and Alice Casanova, who are contributing $3,000 to this program in addition to what we have given from the Rector's Discretionary Trust. And we also want to make sure that you know that we are committed to giving an annual donation to this going forward. So, thank you.
It's humbling, and we're very grateful to support that you all provided. And I'm gonna ask everybody in just a moment to pause. We're gonna take a few pictures here in just a moment. But before we do that, and thank you for the additional contribution, it's outstanding for our students. Another individual who's been very instrumental as part of this effort has, is making a contribution on behalf of a number of different organizations, but I think she has a special sort of heart and story to share about this. So, I'd love to ask Ms. Jane Thorne, representing Lloyd Owens Endowment, Edgewcombe Charitable Foundation, also North Carolina Community Foundation going forward, and share her thoughts.
Good evening. It's my great privilege to present the first ever grant from the Lloyd Owens Endowment for the Arts in Edgewcombe County. Family, friends, and the company, music, education, and children. These things mean so much to me, and they are prime examples of what mattered to my dear friend Lloyd Owens. Lloyd came to Edgewcombe County, a young married man with a family, and was hired by C.B. Martin to teach music in our middle schools. From there, he went to Tarboro High School and built a program that was the envy of our area. Scores of students sang in his courses, acted in his plays, learned to read music and play instruments, and even learned to drive in his driver's ed classes. Lloyd left an indelible mark on the lives of so many young people. He saw talent in every person. He valued every child. He cared and loved, taught and nurtured, stood by, and more importantly, stood with his students, both in and out of the classroom. He left the classroom to pursue opportunities in the business world, but remained committed to the arts. Lloyd served as the organist choir master at Calvary Episcopal Church and served his congregation with joy and faithfulness for many years. When his earthly life ended tragically, family and friends rallied to start this endowment in his memory.
Bryant, Lloyd even saw the talent in him. He was hopeful, Stacey.
Ma'am Chair. Again, just grateful for all the contributions to our music program. We're full of all kinds of exciting recognitions tonight. It is my great pleasure, and before I call them up, but I just want to say a few words, it's my great pleasure to introduce the North Carolina High School Athletics Association 1A State Football Champions for North Carolina, Tarboro High School. And to quote Coach Craddock, and we're gonna ask him and the team to come up here in just a moment, I was talking to Coach Craddock just the week of the state championship football game, and we were talking about, he was making some observations about what he thought and where the team was and who they were playing, and Coach made a very striking comment to me. He said, "We are going to bring the state championship back to Tarboro High School where it belongs." Passing it on from year to year, graduating seniors to the next class, to the next class. I was fortunate enough to get my hands on a state championship t-shirt and hoodie, and it, of course, recognizes Tarboro High School as state champions 2024. But on the back, you see it says, "Mission accomplished," and then list out, "The Dynasty continues: '09, '10, '11, '17, '18, '20, '21, and '24." I'd like to ask Coach Craddock and the team to come forward to be recognized. 1A State Champions Tarboro High School Football.
Good-looking group of guys we got right there, isn't it?
Yes.
So, I know you guys have a lot of work to do tonight. I appreciate the invite, just so I can brag on my coaches for a second and my players, obviously. But as Dr. Bryant knows, a superintendent is only going to be as good as the school board or the people that he's going to surround himself with. As any good principal knows, you're only going to be as good as the teachers that you surround yourself with. And as any football coach who's worth his salt knows, you're only as good as the assistant coaches that you surround yourself with. And anytime I can brag about my assistant coaches, I do, because it's my belief that I have the best assistant coaches in the state of North Carolina, not only in 1A, I'm talking 2A, 3A, 4A. I would put their level of just being great men, let alone great football coaches, against any team in the state of North Carolina. And they're the reason that we are so, so successful year in, in year out, in Tarboro football. So, I would like to at least have the opportunity to recognize my great coaching staff, and please give them a round of applause. Obviously, you gotta have great players. And my God, you know, one of my opportunities that I've had over the years is to speak at a lot of meetings, a lot of conventions, a lot of clinics, and I love doing it. Not because I love speaking, I love doing it because I get to brag about Tarboro. I get to brag about Edgewcombe County. And I want everybody in this room to understand that. Yeah, we represent our community, which we understand is Tarboro, and I preach that a lot. When we go out there on Friday night, we want to represent Tarboro, our community, to the best that we can. But we also understand it's not just about Tarboro. We love our team across the county, friends. We love North Edgewcombe. We love the rivalry, but at the end of the day, we also are trying to represent Edgewcombe County to the finest that we can, because, I understand, I've been here for 30 years, and sometimes we don't get the positive light in a lot of areas that I believe we should. But we can't control all of that. But the little empire that I can control is I try to bring a shining light to our county. And you know what? We've got great kids here. We've got great people here. We have great educators here. If people would just take notice of all that. And so, those are the things that we preach behind the scenes, just so you know that. And you're gonna hear a couple of my football players speak, because, listen, can these guys go out there and play the game of football at a high level each and every Friday night? You darn well better believe they can. The proof is in the pudding. But what people don't understand is, my God, and like I said, I say it all the time, I coach the best kids in the nation. And I believe that. People have asked me a lot of times, "Why have you never left Tarboro? Small schools, small community, why don't you go to a 3A school, a 4A school, college?" My answer is very simple. Why would I? I coached the best kids in the country, right now. So, what am I going to? And these kids, God, I love seeing them grow up. I love seeing them mature. I love seeing them move on and come on, you know, because I always tell them, you don't believe me? They are built for greatness. It's one thing I tell our football players all the time. Guys, yeah, we're gonna be great on the football field. I ain't worried about that. But when you graduate Tarboro High School, which you never graduate Tarboro football, once a Viking, always a Viking, when you hear me say it hard, all the time. But when I look at these kids, I just see greatness. And I'm like, guys, you guys were built to be great in whatever you guys decide to do. So, I'm gonna just ask a couple of them to say just a few words to you. Thank you, guys, for all your support. We love it. We don't take it for granted, and I'm just so proud to be a part of this community. So, I'm gonna ask Mason Satterfield. I only got a couple of them, so I'm just gonna ask them to come on up. Mason, great young man, running back, outside linebacker, he's been with me forever.
Well, honestly, blessed with these guys, coach and staff, they put in a lot of hard work. I think a lot of people don't understand that Sunday, Saturdays, they're here, Fridays, sometimes after the game, they're sitting there. So, it's really not, I mean, it's us playing, but these guys, the game plan. Right here, I tell everybody, he's probably the best defensive-minded guy you will ever meet. Like, he's, sorry, Coach Harden, but he's really behind most of the defensive game plan. Give it to Coach Harden, he puts in a lot of hard work, but Coach Craddock, they're a good staff right here, they're experienced, and that's what it takes to win. So, thank you for looking for them.
Thank you, buddy. This guy out there, just real quick, Chris Hope, you don't mind if I do. Chris, unfortunately, was a young man, great football player, great kid, and he got hurt in our jamboree, tore his ACL, and he missed the whole season. He was gonna be a starter, not that that means anything, but he's such a great kid. That's the one part about coaching football that really pains me, is, you know what? These kids get hurt, and it's just part of the game.
But Chris, would you mind? I ain't trying to throw you in the bus, I just love you so much that I want to give it out to you.
Coach really put me on the spot. I've been a part of Tarboro for a very long time. I've had two older brothers that come play for Coach, you know, so just been around a very long time, and, you know, finally got my time to make a name for myself, and just learning from Coach Craddock and Coach Harden, and it's been, it's been some of the greatest, you know, I've had. So, the moments and the memories that I've made with my teammates has just been a lesson, something that can't be recreated, and I'm just thankful.
Because I know you guys got a lot, I could call them all up, trust me, and I know you guys, you might already have a heart attack, but I'm not gonna do that to you. But I call my son, Cole Craddock, loving the day. But go ahead, Cole.
Good afternoon, everyone. Like I said, I'm Cole Craddock. For those who don't know me, I was number eight on this past year's football team. First off, I want to give all thanks to my coaches and my teammates. You know, they pushed me ever since, I'm playing with both of these guys for most of my life, but, I mean, they push you to be the best, so I can be the best for the team. You know, football, everyone knows, is a team game, so all the credit goes to everyone here, to my dad, awesome coach, best coach I'll ever have in my life, for sure. Not biased at all there. But to Dr. Bryant and all the board, your support does not go unnoticed or unappreciated. When Dr. Bryant first took the job, I think in the first two weeks, I saw him in Tarboro High School, just getting to know some of the faces in there. And I think later on, we started that leadership council. So, not only is he pushing for the advancements of our athletics at Tarboro High School, but he takes a big initiative in advancing our academics as well, and that really goes a long way, it really does. So, to the board and you as well, again, thank you so much for your support. Appreciate it.
That's all we got for you?
Can we get a photo with the board?
Absolutely.
We're gonna take one more pause, then we'll get...
Back in the attendance.
Joseph, what do you think? Joseph, what's best? Can everybody see the camera?
All of them.
They flew out yesterday morning. They flew in today. I don't know what day this week is, but, yeah, they flew out yesterday.
Turn it back over to you, Ma'am Chair.
Yes, sir.
I believe I met you, Kenneth Cox.
Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
I better ask Dr. Bryant one question. Do you have any more fun to entertain us? If not, we're gonna get this meeting to work now. Are you ready to work?
Yes, Ma'am Chair.
Okay. Okay, we're at our fourth item on the agenda, and we have some visitors with us that will be participating in our public comment section. So, the first person on the list is Ms. Susan Perry Cole. Come right on in.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Chair, members of the school board, and Mr. Superintendent, my name is Susan Perry Cole. I'm a resident of the Edgewcombe County side of Rocky Mount. I'm just gonna make a few comments about the redistricting process that you have been engaged in. I want to commend the board for the transparency it has shown throughout the redistricting process, and express appreciation that you will continue through the rest of the process to be just as transparent. I want to place in the public record a request that the board share with the community a timeline for consideration and passage of the maps that are gonna be introduced. We are concerned that there's adequate time for the public to review the maps. I also want to be placed in the public record a request that the board release the shape and block files for each map that is presented, so the community members will have the opportunity to recreate the maps and provide specific public comment on the maps if there may be changes to the maps. I want to publicly express appreciation to the board for holding this meeting tonight in Tarboro. And along the same lines, I'd like to recommend that the board consider hosting a public meeting in Rocky Mount, so residents will have, that are to be annexed, will have a better opportunity to let their voices be heard. As far as comments regarding the draft maps, I want to emphasize that you adhere to compliance with state and federal law that is required, specifically around assuring that black voting strength is not unlawfully diluted. And I also want to thank you for allowing the community to allow, to have input on submission of communities of interest. And we ask that you respect the recommendations that we've made along those lines. And I'll conclude by saying that there are redistricting principles that have been discussed in the presence of this board before, and we want to just draw your attention to adherence to these redistricting principles, to ensure that there's no such thing as unlawful diluting or over-concentrating minority voting strength. Thank you.
Thank you. The next is Ms. Angela Bryant.
Good evening, everyone. Angela Bryant, Nash County, Rocky Mount, North Carolina, and a member of the school demerger, Community Redistricting Working Group. I wanted to start by thanking you for giving us the signup link to get information about what is happening with redistricting, and also getting our first email, which helped us know that the meeting was here and not on Pearl Street. That was after I told people about going to Pearl Street, but I was happy to send out, you know, a change and to bring that to their attention. So, just happy to emphasize what a big difference that makes. Also, it's been mentioned about public hearings. You had already committed that you would have one in Rocky You had already committed that you would have one in Rocky Mount. We hope you would continue to do that. I wanted to encourage you to consider Northern Edgecombe and maybe Tarboro to kind of cover the waterfront with the public hearing where there could be more exchange and input from the public. And also, uh, to emphasize that even if you don't, if you recommend one or more of these maps as your, the one you're leaning to or you want us to focus on in terms of feedback, that we get shape and block files for all three of them so that our input might include something from one that we think you would, we want you to consider and we wouldn't have to try to start from scratch on that. And, um, um, the other point I wanted to make was that, um, uh, when you do, uh, and I haven't looked at and don't know what it would be like to see what you're preparing electronically online, but it would be helpful if it is done in such a way that people can at least find a cross street or a main street or something to have a sense of where they end up and if they can literally search for their address. And I'm sure you probably have that capability and have done that before. All the better. And thank you so much for, uh, your willingness to work with the community and you hope, we hope you'll continue to do that through the end. And I endorse the request for the timeline, uh, so that we will know how to help prepare in the community as well as some lead time on the public hearings so we can help with outreach for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next speaker, Mr. Povell.
Milstein.
Just that.
Good evening, everybody. Been a while, but I'm so glad I know everybody except one real well. Um, and appreciate you, uh, Dr. Bryan. Um, like to see you at the basketball games. I haven't seen any other superintendent that does that. But, um, I just want to say thank y'all for, uh, these meetings, but I hope to see one in my end of the county. On your end, on your end. Um, Ram Prevert is my, um, uh, board member. Um, I know it don't seem like it affect that area, but it'll be school, it'll be district wide. So everybody is affected. I hope to see one in Rocky Mount. Matter of fact, I hope to see more meetings in Rocky Mount. I hope it be some on this end and some on that end. Uh, because everybody don't have a lot of money to travel, uh, to Tarboro. So I hope some means, if it be quality or whatever. Um, you got Edgecombe Community College on that side. You got, uh, schools on that side. But thank y'all for what you are doing or what you're about to do. And I understand, um, and, and it's, and that's what elected officials do. They look out for themselves. But it's bigger than yourselves. It's about what's good for the entire county. So I understand ever how you might want to draw it up, but keep in mind, it ain't about you. It's about what's good for all of us. And you know, I know that, because I used to come to these meetings by myself and stay here all night with y'all. So I've been doing this since the eighties. And I haven't been like I used to because I go to another meeting on that night, but I got to start coming back because it is about the children. Although all my kids are grown. I still support Edgecombe County kids. Uh, so, um, please do what's right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Rachel Allor.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rachel Allor. I'm a voting rights attorney with Southern Coalition for Social Justice. Uh, we are a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization based in Durham, North Carolina, and we're focused on engaging with communities. And we also work on state and local redistricting in North Carolina and all throughout the South. Um, first, I'd like to thank the board. Again, I'm going to echo some of the things that, uh, other community members have said, but I'd like to thank the board for, uh, your transparency with the public, um, throughout the redrawing process. And I want to encourage the board to con, to continue communicating swiftly and openly, including, uh, making the shape files and block files for these, uh, proposed maps for tonight available to the public. Uh, primarily, I want to highlight the statutory and constitutional requirements for these new maps that are being, um, presented today, um, that are important to ensure each citizen of this county has their voice represented. Uh, the maps must be compliant with the Voting Rights Act and the United States Constitution, meaning that they must not deny or abridge the right to vote based on race or color of, uh, the county's citizens. This would include instances where community members have less opportunity to participate and elect candidates of their choice, for example, by vote dilution or racial gerrymandering. And there are three considerations in particular that we implore the board to consider with these maps. Uh, the first is to consider the number of majority black voting age population, uh, districts in the map, uh, as compared to the existing maps, especially since over ninety-three percent of the annexed population, uh, is black. The second is to consider the black voting age population in each district and whether it gives any indication of cracking or packing these voters into, um, different districts. Cracking being splitting the black community inside a district into multiple districts, thereby diluting their vote and making their voices less effective or packing them into one district so that the black voting age population is primarily, you know, con, contained in one district and only giving them, say, one district that represents their voice. Um, so we acknowledge that in, uh, you know, asking the board to consider communities of interest that, uh, the black voting age population might be higher in maintaining these communities. And we still encourage the board to do so in keeping those communities together. Um, but it's all about finding the right balance and, uh, within these redistricting criteria. So, um, uh, then I'll move to the third. The third consideration is that, uh, considering that districts are compact and should not be, you know, sprawling across the county. Um, this one is pretty self-explanatory, but, uh, we just want to ensure, like before, that, uh, we're avoiding dividing these communities of interest or packing groups of voters into just one or two districts, thus making their vote less effective.
Time.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Okay, next, Ms. Darcey.
I will be quick. I know y'all said, Doris, don't talk forever. And everyone has already said what I wanted to say. And I just want to appreciate the board for the work you're doing. It makes me turn back the hands of time to nineteen sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, when the school board was deciding when they would merge the school and who would be the last class to graduate from Patillo. We begged, because it was supposed to have happened the year before we graduated, but between the board and the city and the parents, I got to graduate from Patillo. That's the importance of the work you're doing and the impact on the community. Dr. Bryan, I have watched you since you've arrived here. I appreciate it. I think we got the best person. You're about like C.B. Martin. He was the one in charge when we did the consolidation. So I just want to encourage you to continue to inform the community. Even, did, did y'all hear that civics lesson tonight? And all that she was talking about, the packing and everyone else? I was like, God, we need a class right now. We need to get this information to the community. So I know it makes you work more harder and more often, but let's get this information to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Last but not least, uh, Ms. Tamisha Patterson.
Good evening, board members. I am Tamisha Patterson. How you doing? I am the president of Southeast Rocky Mount, which is located in Rocky Mount, North Carolina, um, where Richard Joyner is our councilperson. I'm grateful to be here tonight and to take part of the redistricting of Edgecombe County Schools. I was a student of Nash County. However, I lived in Edgecombe County and there was a lot going on back in the nineteen eighties. But, um, we enjoyed living in Edgecombe County and being able to attend Nash County Schools. Um, the talking point I have tonight is to thank you for holding a meeting in Tarboro. However, we hope that the board will consider hosting a public meeting hearing in Rocky Mount so that residents who are being annexed can have a better opportunity to let their voices be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. That is our public comment section. Okay, thank you. We'll move to item five on our agenda. This addresses our board members. During your time of reading of our minutes of the January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting, did you have any comments, concerns, or questions that you need to bring to our attention before I call for a motion? Hearing none, I need to hear a motion to approve our January thirteenth, uh, public, uh, open session minutes.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five regular business board meeting, open session meetings.
Second? Has been moved and properly second that we will approve our January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five regular business board meeting minutes. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. The motion's carried. Thank you very much. We'll move to item six, items for information. Uh, Dr. Bryan, six point one.
Just, uh, few, few announcements tonight. Um, um, in, in the next, uh, couple of weeks, all of our schools are going to be participating in safety lockdown drills as part of our ongoing commitment to student, staff, and safety. Uh, these drills are a vital component of what we do for emergency preparedness plan, ensuring that everyone understands the proper procedures in case of an actual emergency. Law enforcement officers will be on site to observe, provide feedback, and help refine our safety protocols. And we, as always, appreciate the cooperation of our students, staff, and families in making these drills as effective as possible. February is also Family Support Awareness Month, strengthening connections. Um, it's, uh, Family Support Awareness Month in North Carolina, a time dedicated to highlighting the importance of strong family connections and resources available to support parents and caregivers. The ECPS Family Resource Centers Building Bridges for Families Initiative will be actively engaged with schools throughout the month, providing valuable resources and house, hosting in-person events to support students, families, and staff. I would also like to highlight a, uh, student, um, uh, who was recognized with spotlight at the ECPS Excellence. Um, incredibly proud of, uh, Sina Sanchez Cruz, a standout student at Edgecombe Early College High School. Recently spoke at the State Board of Education meeting in Raleigh alongside Principal Matt Smith. Uh, she shared insights about the cooperative innovative high school model, which provides students with unique opportunities for academic success. She graduated this spring with a high school diploma and associate in a science degree and certificate in criminal justice technology. She's valedictorian for her class and a first-generation college student. She eventually wants to continue her education at NC State University, which she will do so in the fall, pursuing a degree in law and justice with the goal of becoming an immigration attorney. Um, her achievements are great and they reflect the power of determination, hard work, and, uh, our early college program. Uh, February is also celebrating Career Intendential Education Month. This month, we proudly recognize the impact of career-intendential education programs preparing students for success in the workforce. CT provides hands-on learning experiences that equip students with skills needed for high-demand careers in fields such as healthcare engineering, IT, business, and more. Schools across the district will be hosting special events to, uh, celebrate the month. And, uh, we encourage students, parents, and community to take part. As everyone also knows, February, um, is Black History Month, uh, certainly honoring the past and inspiring the future. It's time to recognize, honor, and celebrate all those contributors, achievements, and legacy of African-Americans throughout history across Edgecombe County Public Schools. Students, staff are engaged in special activities, lessons, and events that highlight the impact of black leaders, innovators, and changemakers in various fields. We encourage our school community to take part in these celebrations and reflect on the importance of, of equity, inclusion, and the continued pursuit of excellence for all. Um, I attended such event at the Black Heritage Museum and Cultural Center in Tarboro last week. It's a great event. Um, just want to thank everybody for, for that. Our students participated and, uh, got to see some great artwork. Uh, I believe, uh, Ms. Worris Lee and Dr. Johnson were also at that event. A great evening and, uh, just a great, uh, evening of celebration. Concludes my report. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Six point two, maintenance updates, Mr. Perkins.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Vice Chair, Board Members. I'll be here in three minutes. This is the pump at, uh, Tissue Resources Center, uh, ground. Somebody in the other room, we replaced it. Uh, this is Southwest. Um, the front entrance was, uh, they had, uh, somebody painted it. Uh, the doors, the paint's gone. I can't see if they could, okay, you can see right there. Uh, doors, the paint's come off. And you see where we went back and we painted the whole front area, the top of it. And you see the doors where we scraped the whole paint off and, uh, we repainted it. And this is, uh, West Middle Boiler Pike, the leaking pipe. You see where the hose, and then on the, on the right side, we fixed it. And this is another leaking pipe at the boiler. And we fixed that and we got a new pipe. And this is, uh, another part of the pipe that we fixed. And that's it. Thank y'all.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Anyone have any question? Appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Six point three. Uh, this is that.
Um, well, good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Board Members, and, uh, Dr. Bryan. Um, back here again to talk to you about redistricting. Uh, I think that what you will see on the, um, in the slides, at least for the first part, is going to be familiar to you. But tonight, we are moving into the meat of the matter. Uh, we've been building up and, and coming to talk to you and talking to members of the public, um, multiple times over the last many months, I think, since last August. So, um, I, I think that you all are aware, and I hope the community is aware, that the reason we're here tonight is because of the Act of the General Assembly, um, which has redrawn the lines between the Nash and the, uh, Nash Rocky Mount and Edgecombe County School Districts to follow the county line. And that means, um, that, yeah. Um, we now have, um, a, a new section that has been added to Edgecombe County. Um, it's a small amount of land, as you can see, but it, and it's a very large number of people. Um, and so that land and those people will need to be allocated to an electoral district, uh, before the next election. Um, and just for comparison's sake, you'll see in purple, that's the population of the Rocky Mount area of Edgecombe County that's been added to the whole county, um, that will need to be distributed among seven electoral districts. The small purple area has as many people as all of the green area. And those are, the lines on there are precincts within, uh, Edgecombe County. So you can see that it's quite a challenge. And I've been with this board through the redistricting in twenty twenty, um, and twenty-ten, and two thousand. So this is more of a challenge than it has been in the past just because of the sheer number. You have fluctuations with every census and you have to redraw your district lines. But this really will be more challenging because of the large number of people and the small, um, small area that's going to have to be distributed. As you'll remember from the past, redistricting and from my past As you'll remember from the past redistricting and from my past presentations, that the ideal size of a district is determined by dividing the entire population of the county by seven, so that you'll have seven districts. The new ideal size is 6,986 per district. So the equivalent, the, the new population is equivalent to approximately 1.4 districts. And the importance, again, for having to distribute those equally, um, is for the purposes of one person, one vote, which is a constitutional principle that says that every district should have substantially equal number of people. And that, um, the standard that the courts have set is no more than 5% above or below the average or the ideal size. So, um, I'm going to turn it over to Blake to get into the nitty-gritty of the, the maps that he has drawn. I'll come back in and talk a little bit about the criteria, um, and, uh, the criteria that has been mentioned, the Voting Rights Act, the Constitution, also the criteria that this board has adopted. And so I'll come back, and then at the end, we'll talk about the next steps forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Deborah. It's good to be with you all in person. Uh, I'm Blake Esselston from Map Figure Consulting. And, uh, Deborah teed up the, the context well. I wanted to just show a few more maps before we talk about criteria. And you have seen this, this one before. Uh, here, the, it's kind of a perspective map. The, the, the gray base has been rotated a little bit, so you have a little bit of a 3D effect. And then each of the census blocks has, uh, population, and for those populated, this is just the, the number of people in each of those blocks. And I represented that with a little spy, like a tower. And so the height of each of these towers represents the number of people in each block. And when you see a concentration of them, that, that's an indication of where there's, there's more population. And you can see the old map on the left, um, there, the, the population center of note was Tarboro. But when you look at the new map, there is also a population center on the Rocky Mount side. So this, it's just another way of sort of visualizing what, what Deborah was talking about, that that, that population center on the west side of the county now needs to be incorporated. This is another slide that we've shown in a previous presentation, but it's, uh, it's not just the number of people, but the demographics of the, the newly added area are different. So this talks about some of the race and ethnicity statistics for the old jurisdiction, as well as the newly added area, and then the new jurisdiction, the entire county. And I wanted to draw your attention to a few numbers. If you look in the, the old jurisdiction, the first row underneath the headings, and compare the percentage for the Black population and the White population, you'll see they're quite close. There's actually less than 2% separating them. Black is 47.71%, and the White is 45.89%. But then, as one of the public commenters mentioned, the newly added area has a Black population that is more than 93% Black. And when that is taken into account, and you look at the entire new jurisdiction and look at the columns representing the Black and White percentages, the Black, uh, has increased to 56.40%, and the White has decreased to 37.95%. And so it's gone from less than two percentage points of difference to more than 18 percentage points of difference. So that's a, that's a significant change. I did also want to make clear that while I had prepared this slide for, uh, a previous presentation, this is essentially all that I looked at in the way of racial data. I was not looking at racial data at the precinct level or the block level. So in the process of drawing maps, I was not looking and comparing statistics as I went. I should point out, I was not doing that for, I did not have any political data in the software either. So it's a entirely nonpartisan process. Uh, another slide you've seen before, but this is just i- in comparison to previous cycles where those bars have been above and below the target, and we've had to sort of balance between them. In this case, every district needs to add 1,400 people, give or take. So each district is going to need to sort of move toward the, the newly added area in the, in the Rocky Mount section of the county, move toward that, that yellow star you can see on the left. And this is a similar map here, uh, but the numbers here, instead of just showing the districts, these indicate the location, the residences of the incumbent board members. So you can see that while the new population that needs to be incorporated into the districts is over on the, on the west side where the, where that dotted area is, a number of the incumbents are closer to the, the Tarboro area. So as we've discussed in previous meetings, these, the districts need to take this into account. Deborah will talk a little bit about how incumbency was taken into consideration. And all of the districts sort of will be, um, having to extend west to incorporate that new population. And I think the next slide is about criteria, so I will hand it back to Deborah.
Could we take these two out of order and switch?
Of course, yeah.
Okay.
Do you want the pointer?
Just this one more?
Yeah.
So I wanted to start with the required criteria, because several of your public commenters, and certainly in, in previous meetings, this has come up. The purpose of the redistricting is to comply with one person, one vote, so that no district is above or below, uh, more than 5% of the ideal size district. That is a, that is a given, and that is a constitutional principle that was guiding this process. That's not something that the board said, oh, well, we'll do that or we won't do that. That's what we brought to the process. Another core requirement or core criteria that, that we bring to the process is that minority voting strength should not be diluted or over-concentrated, cracked or packed, as, as the attorney that spoke at public comment called it. Blake did not have racial data. He was not moving census blocks or precincts based on the race of the population in those districts. So he came to this process with a race-neutral set of criteria that I'm going to go over in a minute. What my role in this is to look at the maps that were drawn with the board's criteria and give my opinion as to whether they're compliant with Voting Rights Act and constitutional principles. And based on my review of the maps that you'll be seeing today, they do not suffer from any dilution or over-concentration of, of minority voters. What I will say is that the, the district population is, uh, you know, there's going to be a significant change in some of the racial makeup of the districts. We did not go into that with an intention to discriminate, um, and based on my review, I don't think there's an effect of discrimination. So that covers the constitutional and the Voting Rights Act concerns. I'm happy to go into more detail with that. But I just wanted you to be aware that when these maps were first being produced, race was not a factor in where to move. The factors were those, um, criteria that the board gave. Also, one of the fun, fundamental sort of, um, guidelines that, that Blake used was not to split census blocks. And I, I've explained before, the reason for that is because a census block is the smallest area that you can have an accurate population total. And so if you split it, you cannot determine what an accurate number is for the population of that block. Um, and also the districts are contiguous. So those were the required sort of fundamental ground rules that were followed, um, and that are, will be reviewed for the redistricting. And so now, um, we'll go back to the discretionary criteria. And these are the criteria that is up to you as board members. And the board at our meeting in November, um, considered a list of different possible priorities, guidelines, criterias, and, um, asked us to produce three maps. The first one was to prioritize preserving the core of those existing districts, the districts that you all have now, um, to the extent possible, and keep the incumbents in their districts. Now I say prioritize for each of these, it doesn't mean that other, uh, sort of considerations wouldn't be taken into effect, uh, or taken into account. But just that that was the priority among the, uh, different considerations that, that Blake could, um, keep in mind going into the process. Prior, now, the second map is to prioritize making the districts reasonably compact and disregard incumbency altogether. Um, and the third was to prioritize respecting communities of interest. And that was a process that came about through opening up, um, to the public for, uh, over 30 days through a website, um, to give feedback or give input to the board about what those communities of interest are. And we received some very thoughtful and detailed, um, guidelines or, or considerations that, that Blake has used in taking, in taking into account and developing map number C. So I hope that this will give you an idea of, um, how the, how the maps are going to look different, uh, how different things are prioritized, and, and just really give you an idea of what's possible in this process. These are not set in stone. This is, to, the first time they've been presented. I just want everyone in the public to know that, um, we sent these maps to the board, uh, this morning, uh, to the, so that we could prepare this presentation. But we didn't have any conversations or feedback from anyone asking for this to go here or that to go there. This is going to be all new to you, and I know it's a lot to digest. At the end of this process, after Blake goes through all the maps, I'll come back again, and we'll talk about next steps and, and what the board would need to do going forward. Thanks.
Great. And I realize that I, there was one point I wanted to make when we were looking at this slide, which is that currently, there are only two existing districts, District One and District Seven, which, uh, are adjacent to the Rocky Mount area, the, the new part of the jurisdiction. Okay, so I wanted to talk a little bit, and I, um, I, I, I think it's going to save time, actually. I want to be able to do it in a way that both the board and the audience can see. And I don't have a way of steering a cursor on these screens from here, but I can from the computer up there, so. But I realize that having the microphone is good here, but I think I'm going to go up to that computer for a second with the clicker, just to, to explain what's going on in this slide. As, as Deborah mentioned, um, the, the census blocks are the fundamental building unit when you're building districts. And then when we're taking into account other communities or other administrative boundaries, in this case, these are neighborhoods designated by the city of Rocky Mount, sometimes those don't align precisely with the census blocks. And the next slide shows that, and I'm just going to jog up here. Please let me know if anyone can't hear me. I'll try to speak loud, but, and then I'm going to make this into the laser pointer. Can everyone hear me? Ah, even better. Thank you, Dr. Bryant. So, um, for example, this big block here, or let me start by just saying these, so this would be an example of, you can see, these are streets in the Edgemont neighborhood of Rocky Mount. And you can see a rectangle here that's a street. And these, what are shown in the black lines here are the actual boundaries of the census blocks. And sometimes they look like what you would expect a block to look like, a rectangle. But other times, they have funnier shapes, like this shape here. So even though I'm building districts out of something that's called block, that are called blocks, they may have more, um, unusual or irregular shapes like this one. And if you look at this, this census block here, the out, that's outlined in black here around the Pine View Cemetery in this area, you can see that there are actually one, two, three, four different neighborhoods that are part of that block. And since I'm using the blocks as the fundamental unit, I can't, um, I can't exactly follow these neighborhood lines. So sometimes there's a trade-off, for example, here, about which neighborhood, um, or which, I should say, which district this block goes into so as to keep the neighborhoods, uh, together as, as citizens had recommended. Uh, another example is down here by, by Redgate. There, there's a block, sort of an oddly shaped block you can see over here. And the, the green and the pink neighborhood boundaries don't follow the streets. Like you, you might be able to imagine that, uh, here, what they did was put, um, both the, the street, sorry, the houses on both sides of Rosewood Avenue are in the Edgemont neighborhood. But here, uh, Rosewood Avenue is the dividing line between blocks. So, um, one of the points I wanted to make here, and I'll come back to the other podium, um, is that if the way that we align with blocks is such that you think it, it should have been done slightly differently, in other words, to have the, the, uh, that, that block be in the adjacent neighborhood rather than the neighborhood or the, the district that, uh, that it's in, these types of small adjustments should be something that we can handle. It shouldn't be a problem. So with that said, I'd like to start with chapter, option A. Again, remembering this is the one that was basically trying to keep things as similar as possible to the existing districts. You know, still with the understanding that we had to add 1,400 people to each district. So the, the next slide shows these districts in comparison with the, the black outlines showing what the current districts are. And again, I think just to make sure that the board and the audience can, can, uh, can see what's going on on the screen, I'm going to dash back up here. Joe, thank you for giving the mic.
I was inspired by all those football players and their, uh, ability to move around.
So here, you can see, for example, that District Two needed to be extended to the west. So District Two, again, the black outline is the current district outline, but the green extends in this area up here. So the green extended into what is now District One. Similarly, District Five, uh, had to add a significant amount of area, and that also comes out of District One here. District Three had to extend to the west. That's this orange area extending into what is now District Six. District Four had to extend in that direction too, and it gets just one, this is just one census block out of District Six. The rest of it is coming out of District Seven. And then that leaves, we haven't talked about District Six. I mean, we've talked about it, having other districts come into it, but District Six gains population by extending to the west as well and gets a little bit of the, uh, the new jurisdiction here in the Rocky Mount area. Um, otherwise, it is taking some area and, and population from District One and, uh, more from District Seven. And then Districts One and Seven extend into Rocky Mount, and of that, um, roughly 9,000-person population that Deborah mentioned, most of that is going into either District One or District Seven. And just again, to reiterate, this is the, the plan that, um, was, I, I made every effort as I was doing this to, to change as little as I could. And I didn't specify this, but, but the, the incumbents are all kept within their existing districts. Uh, and I'm looking for the switch here, so I think I see it. I'll turn that off. And we can talk about option B. And option B is, um, got very straightforward shapes. Again, this is the one that was designed to prioritize compactness. And so by compactness, uh, I am talking about trying to have things, if possible, resemble regular shapes, like a, a rectangle, or a triangle, or a trapezoid. Try to keep the boundaries between districts, um, straight, uh, to the extent possible. And this makes significant changes to the, the plan. Again, I was, I started, for this one, I started with a totally blank map. I was not considering, uh, the existing districts, and I was not considering incumbent residences either. Um, and I, I, I think that, uh, this result is, um, in terms of compactness, this, this is more compact than a lot of other redistricting plans. And then interestingly, what I found, as I said, I was not considering where incumbents lived as I was drawing it. I didn't have that data in the map, and then I turned it on after I was done, and I realized that though this map does, it, it pairs to incumbents. So this, the, when I first drew the map, it, um, both the incumbents for Districts Three and District Seven Seven are in that tan district, and the incumbents, the representatives for Districts Two and Five, are in the green district. But when I looked more closely, I realized that in all cases, the incumbents are living close to a border, well, with the exception of the incumbents for Districts Three and Four. But in order to avoid those pairings, it only involved very small changes. So you can see at the top left, I was able to extend just a little bit of District One to make sure that the representative for District One would be in a district without anyone else. And then District Five, by putting, extending a little bit, you can see how the gray outline goes beyond the purple into the green a little bit to include the incumbent from District Five. And that means that Two and Five were no longer paired in the green district. And then at the bottom of the map, by extending District Seven down, and again, that's, I think, two census blocks, they're large census blocks, extending that down to include the incumbent from District Seven, Three and Seven are no longer paired in that tan district. So just by making those three little changes, there were no more pairings. And the other change that I made was to swap the numbering for, or the labels for District Six and District Three. You can see in the previous map, sorry, I need to go to this one here. Okay. So I am calling this Option B2 because the one that I purely drew without any reference to where incumbents lived was Option B, that looked like this. And then I made those three little changes and changed the numbering for Districts Three and Six, and that gives us Option B2. And this, as I said, was very minimal changes, but this means that no two incumbents are paired in the same districts. The districts are still very compact. I will say this is quite different, and this slide shows where the incumbents live, so the purple labels indicate the location of the incumbents, the black labels are just the district numbers. And then I have a side-by-side here, so you can kind of see how this one compares to the existing, using a different design than the one we looked at for Option A. But you can see here that Districts One, Three, Five, and Six, so the purple, the orange, the tan, and the pink are all substantially different from the existing districts. Four, Two, and Seven are more similar. I mean, any scenario in this redistricting cycle, the districts are going to have to change significantly because they all need to add 1,400 people. But Four, Two, and Seven, in other words, yellow, green, and the blue, stay significantly more similar to the existing ones. Okay. And then moving on to draft option C, and again, this is the one where we took into account the public information from the community about communities of interest. And the community provided, this is part of the document, it was a two-page document from the community working group that was mentioned in the public comment here, and this is, as I said, this is a part of it. But what you can see is, at the beginning of the document, there are communities that are identified as parts of the Rocky Mount city area that should be kept together. And I should point out that Rocky Mount and Tarboro, their populations are numerous enough that they can't all be in one district. They need, those, both of those municipalities need to be divided. I'm not going to read through this slide, I don't expect folks to read through this slide, but just notice on the right-hand side that there's an Area One, Area Two, and Area Three, and there are neighborhoods identified that should be in each of those. And so if we look here at the Rocky Mount area, these purple lines are drawn to honor those suggestions about which parts of the Rocky Mount community should be kept together, kept intact, if you will. And the colors in the background, again, this is based on data that is from the city of Rocky Mount Municipal Government, and they have identified these boundaries for the neighborhoods. If you look at the purple line that is, I'm debating running back up to the other computer, but I think I can describe this quickly. The purple line between the Edgemont neighborhood, which is pink, kind of in the lower part of the screen in the middle, and southeast Rocky Mount, you can see that because I'm following census block boundaries, I can't exactly follow the neighborhood boundary. And again, if folks feel that it would be better to have that line be moved one block to the north, or something like that, that should be easy to accommodate because those population numbers are relatively small. But I felt that that community input gave me a lot to work with, and I was able to honor the, as I understood them. Again, it's also possible that I somehow misunderstood what was meant in the written description, so, but as I said, minor adjustments should be not a problem. And then if you look at where Districts One and Seven connect, that's the Rocky Mount area where the purple and pink and blue come together. And I just wanted to point out that compared to the previous slide, which was showing sort of central Rocky Mount, District One goes on to include most of northern Rocky Mount, and District Seven extends down to include Sharpsburg. This is another part of that document from the community that talked about other communities of interest outside Rocky Mount, or in the, farther away from Rocky Mount that should be kept intact. The first one being the Whittakers and Battleboro area, and you can see there are a number of communities specified in there, as well as most of the municipalities, the other municipalities in the county, as well as some communities that technically aren't municipalities, like Lawrence and Red Hill. And that Whittakers and Battleboro area is in District Two, that also includes Red Hill, Coker Wimberley School, Dunbar, Leggett. And then the one thing that was specified that could be included as that, which was the Lawrence community, I was not able to draw a district that was able to have Lawrence with Leggett. The document described that Lawrence and Leggett have some connections, but I could not figure out a way to do that and balance population. But the dividing line between Lawrence, that where you can see Lawrence and Leggett, follows Fishing Creek, and it's also the precinct boundary. The last part of the document that was provided included communities of interest within Tarboro, or the Tarboro area, and you can see there are six groups here, and each group includes areas that were meant to be kept together. I guess the sixth is not a group, but the municipality of Princeville. And you can see actually more clearly on this map that Princeville was kept entirely intact and in District Three. But this map, I didn't try to put all the labels in because it would, it looked like it would be too cluttered, but essentially, the pink dots in those symbols that you can see in the eastern part of District Five, that's Group One. The green dots in District Two are what's specified as Group Three. The blue, dark orange, and gold dots are Groups Two, Four, and Five from the document, and those are all in District Six. And then, as I mentioned before, Princeville is all in District Three. And again, here, if I misunderstood something about one of the, say, the boundaries of the historic district in Tarboro or something, making modifications to this should not be a problem. And I also, at this point, it's as good a point as any to mention that we are definitely willing and ready to share shape files and the block assignment files as the community has requested. We did not have them ready today because we expected that maybe the board would say, "Oh, well, we do want you to make this one minor adjustment," or, and there's one other one coming up in a minute. So rather than present something today and have that go out and be on the website or something, and then have it be modified very quickly and have the potential for confusion, we wanted to wait until we had heard from the board before providing the shape files and the other computer files that the community has requested. So in addition to the document that was provided earlier, so you can see at the top here that the date in the memo is January 6th, and then under the subject line, it says there's a corrected version on January 18th. This was a revised version of this document that was provided, unfortunately, after I had already gotten most of the way through the drafting process. So I was unable to incorporate this as part of the communities of interest, but I can explain my understanding of what was intended, and I think it's something that can be accommodated, and the board should be aware, and maybe could give guidance about this. So in draft option C, as I drew it, you can see at the top of the map, the top left of District Two, that Whittakers and Battleboro were kept together in one district. But Battleboro is technically part of the Rocky Mount municipality. So my understanding of what's in the highlighted text here is that the community provided sort of an alternative, that either Rocky Mount, sorry, either Whittakers and Battleboro could be together in the district, or alternatively, Battleboro could be kept with Rocky Mount. And there's sort of two ways of considering it. So I drew this based on the original document, but if you see, I think this will be easier to do if I can steer the cursor for a minute, so bear with me. Okay. So the idea would be, is this on? Can you hear me? Okay. The idea would be that essentially, the northern part of Rocky Mount would be kept altogether, since this part of Battleboro is in Rocky Mount. The District One boundary could be extended up into the green, into District Two, to include Battleboro. And then what would happen is that this part of District One, or some part of it, I haven't, I haven't, you know, tested exactly where the lines would be, but that some part of this eastern part of District One would then go into the green, would go into District Two. So that would be the alternative for option C. I think that's the last one. I'll have to run back and forth. So as some of the public commenters requested, one of, oh, thank you. As was mentioned during the public comments section, the, there's interest in being able to look not just at images of maps from these slides, but actually an interactive map like people are used to looking at if you're using, you know, Google Maps, or Apple Maps, or one of those products. And there is such an interactive map, it is online now. There's a QR code if folks want to capture that on their phones. The geofigure.com address worked for me two times out of three. I tested it, the first two times it worked great, then I tested it using another browser. I may need to work out some kinks with that, but the QR code should work, and I can also just send another web address to staff that they can share with the board and with the public. Or I'll just make sure that I can get that geofigure.com address working. But I will demonstrate that map in just a moment. And I realize, Dr. Brian, I will have to go back up to that computer for that, so. And so then this is a more detailed table showing demographic statistics for the three draft options. Those are the top three, and then the existing is at the bottom. You'll see there are six categories of race and ethnicity statistics. There's a, it's, yeah, you can see it a little more clearly on that screen. There's a gray section. The first six of those are based on total population, and then the second group of six are based on the voting age population. And there are a lot of numbers here. Yeah. And I did want to point out here that since I had called the slight modification of option B, where I added, made those three changes to make sure that the incumbents were not included in the same districts, I was calling that B2, and the statistics that are in this, listed in this table as option B, that's actually B2. So that's, this is reflective of not only those three changes, but also the fact that I swapped Districts Three and Six. And I think, yeah, I will, Joe, if I just go and, I lost Joe. We're going to switch to a browser from the PowerPoint. Deborah, I don't think I turned off my mic, so.
So I will just...
Should I do the demo?
Okay. Do you want to do that? Or, I was just going to sort of wrap things up, but if you want to do that first, that's fine. Yeah, go ahead.
So when you go to that interactive map, you're going to see something like this. Again, in terms of navigation, it's very much like a Google map or another map you might be familiar with. You can zoom in by scrolling. We're using the plus and minus down here. There are instructions about how this works, but I'll explain it as well. So you can turn, these layers on the left-hand side here can be made visible or invisible. You can turn them on or off. And the way you do that is by hovering over the name, and you see it, if I hover over here, there's what looks like an eye to indicate that it's visible. If I click on it, it changes to a closed eyelid to show that it is not visible. So that's how you would toggle the visibility for something like option A. So here, I can turn option A on or off, do the same thing with option B2, option B3. And then if you wanted to say compare what option C, we talked about, this is the one based on communities of interest, and compare that to the existing district boundaries, you can turn the black lines, and here, the black numbers correspond to the existing boundaries, and the other colored numbers or gray numbers correspond to the draft districts. We've also got precinct boundaries, if folks are familiar with the precincts. If people want to see the incumbent locations, those are these little purple dots and the purple numbers. We've also got municipalities to have that for context. And then another thing that's nice about this, this is actually a newer feature, was not available in some of the older versions of maps like this. If you were specifically interested, let's say you're interested in District Six, next to the eye icon here, you can say, "Show only this." So I'm just going to look at District Six here for option C, and then we'll turn on option B2 and go back to Six and say, "Show only this." And so you can kind of see the extent of District Six in option B2, which I'm going to turn off and turn back on again, that's the bigger one to the east, are quite different than the extent of District Six in option C. And then again, to undo that, you would go back to that layer and say, "Show others," and it'll put all the districts back on. And I do want to demonstrate the search feature. So we talked about zooming in. If folks want to just say, "Zoom in on Tarboro," you can zoom in, and as you zoom in, more streets will become visible. And zoom in even farther, and you'll get more street names. I left my notes down there. I have three specific examples I wanted to show. I'll grab a pen, excuse me. So the magnifying glass up here... So, the, the magnifying glass up here is what you would use to do a search. So, if you wanted to search on a specific address, the example I have was 1100 Stokes Street. And you see that it's going to suggest some in other places, but it guesses that the one that's relevant to us is Rocky Mount. Does anyone, little trivia quiz, can anyone identify what this property here is? Yes, that's right. So, and you can see, when you search, I, I'll do another search, but you'll see that a dot will appear on the site. So, not only can you search on addresses, one of the communities that was identified in the public document that we received is Austin Pines. You can see that it suggests two, there's, I guess, maybe there's another community called Austin Pines somewhere else in North Carolina, but we click on the Tarboro one, and this dot kind of, you can see this dot sort of pulses and flashes to show that area. And these, this was one of the tools that I used to identify, to make, make sure that the, these communities were, were kept intact. But if, if somebody has a different understanding of what, what constitutes Austin Pines, please let us know. And then a last thing, in addition to searching for a neighborhood or a street address, you can also search for a landmark like so, it, it, it should have all the schools in here as well. And so, then if you, if you were interested in seeing which district this is in, in each of the options, you can then turn the layers. Not sure. Oh, it's just showing District 6. That's, that's the situation there. So, that's just a quick demonstration of how the map works. And I think I covered all of that. I did want to point out that the, these slides will be made available to, on the website, so the slideshow with the, the static maps will also be made publicly available. Deborah?
Thank you, Blake. So, we are now at the point where the board gets to make some decisions about how to move forward. And I think this is a sample timeline or next steps document that you've seen a few times from now. So, we've gotten community input, adopted criteria, Blake's prepared three maps. So, the next steps, and maybe not necessarily in this order, is that public hearings are held, or the board might suggest some changes tonight, to have different plans put forward, or some alterations to these plans, and then they'll be put out for the public to give input. But I think what we've recommended before is that it's placed on the district website, the interactive map, the presentation. And I know if folks go to the redistricting page on the website now, that they'll see all the past presentations and some explanation. And so, that would be where this would be added. So, the board, you know, Blake can go back up and, and just modify with the, or show you the interactive map if you have some questions. But I think at this point, what we will need is some direction on whether the board wants to put, put one, two, or three of the maps that you've seen tonight out there for public input and public comment, and schedule some hearings. Whether you want to make some tweaks to one or more of the maps you've seen tonight before they're put out there. It really is sort of in your laps now to make that decision. And then, once you've, you've decided, and I'll just reiterate, we have a deadline of December filing for candidates for the 2026 elections. So, it does seem like we've got a fair amount of time, but that can go rather quickly. So, with keeping that in mind, Blake and I are available to come back and listen to public feedback, to accept it via the internet, via the website, as you did before. So, I'd just like to see if there are any questions from board members, if there's anything you'd like to direct us. And at the end of that, once you've made a decision about how, how you want to proceed, and on what maps you want to proceed, I'll turn it over to Dr. Brian to talk about some suggestions that staff has come up with for perhaps locations and, and things like that for public hearings. I will note that we also anticipate having some large, hard copies of maps printed and placed around in different locations. That will take some time to get done, so, you know, it's not going to be instantaneous. We're hoping that this presentation and the, and the map can be up on the website rather quickly, and we'll be getting this material turned around just as fast as we can. So, any, any questions from board members, or?
Yeah, I speak for Evan Woods, right now. That's a lot of material. You've done an excellent job doing that. And I'm one, just the documents that we have right here, I would need to study that. I can't make a decision right this minute. And that's what I would like to do, and move with this situation, not forget about it, and then come back a month or two, three months later. No? And when we get ready to do anything on districting, again, it, it needs to be the meeting itself. We, we are not even, did anybody bring sleeping bag?
Not since pause.
We're going to be here for a while, and I, I prefer that's what we do, but I, I can hear some of the other comments that others may have to make. And my, my only comment is, that's, that is a lot of information, and there are a lot of streets that I can't even quite read because of time, and I'm old. I'm sure if I get a magnifying glass when I get young, I'm a little confused with all of it because, you know, you find a little something, you think, I think that's the answer, and it doesn't say that. So, I would love to be able to take them home and spend a little time with them before we start looking at narrowing the options down. I think you've done a great job. You've given us some pretty different kinds of ideas of looking at it. But, other than you pulled up Austin Pines, I kept saying, I know that place, I lived there. I can read that word, you know, but they're just tiny, and I'm old.
Well, I'm, Ms. Ken, I've got to get my reading glasses out to read these little numbers too. So, what I might recommend is that, I was trying to find, there we go. Is that this presentation, we put on the website, the public will be having a chance to look at these maps as you are. And then, when you schedule the next meeting, you sort of combined that, they, they might have, you know, citizens might have input on one of them, they may have input on all three of them, and you will also come to the table with having had the chance to look at them and make a, sort of, maybe make a narrowing down at that point. So, I think that's a perfectly legitimate option to take, and if there aren't, we just sort of, we understand this is a lot of material to go over. I mean, I, I was able to spend several hours looking at the maps and looking at the population data, and you have not had that luxury. So, I certainly understand that. And I would say that when you come back, and perhaps it's just a meeting just for redistricting, you can have more of an informal back and forth and answering questions, and then decide, you know, how to, how to narrow it down. I, I just wanted the board to have the opportunity, before maps went out to the public in a very wide dispersal, so that we wouldn't have a lot of confusion. If there was something that was very obvious to board members tonight that you wanted to change, or you wanted to dismiss right away, we could do that. But Blake, unless you have?
This, just to follow up on what Deborah was just saying, I think if there are no requests for changes based, at this juncture, at this point, then I think it would be appropriate to provide the, the shape files and the other files that the public requested. They will be clearly labeled as draft, you know, initial versions. But I can understand that those files allow other people to load them into their own mapping software and do their own analysis that can't be done just with the interactive, the interactive map that I showed you. So, I will be able to do that in the next few days.
One question. On the draft option B2, the small numbers of the, where the incumbents live, are there?
That's right. Yeah.
Any other questions? Ms. Lewis? Y'all have any questions right now? Okay, thank you for coming, Blake, glad to see you.
Yes, likewise, good to be back here.
All right. Uh, we will, Dr. Brown, you need to make any comments right now?
Well, I, all right. Stagger. I think one of the things that we, we had talked about was the idea that once, obviously, this board has been committed to transparency and public input since the beginning of all this. So, we, we talked about
About once we have sort of a timeline in place, where we can get the maps taken care of, and complete direction from the board, the idea that we would have, at least initially, at least four meetings, at least four to start with around the county for community input, and we would base those at North Edgcombe High School, Southwest Edgcombe High School, Tarboro High School, and then go to either the Teacher Resource Center or one of the elementary schools or middle schools in Rocky Mount. That's, that's a starting place for that. And then, even though the interactive maps are outstanding and going to be on the website for folks, then we would also produce maps, or we would pick locations across the county where we would post those maps, so people could look at a paper version of that as well. And what we have talked about is Brazewell Library, OIC, Brazewell Library, which is in Rocky Mount, OIC, Rocky Mount, Pine Tops Library, Tarboro Library, Administrative County Office, and also our office. So, that, that's six locations where we are looking at putting a, a paper map for anyone to consider. That, that's an initial, initial conversations.
The only thing that occurs to me is, Dr. Brian's talking about all the meetings and all the maps that are being produced, that it would be helpful
For, for the board to, tonight, to let us know whether Option B as initially drawn, or Option B2 as, you know, modified to include incumbents, is preferred. I mean, certainly, you know, we can put all four of them out there, but that's one that I think the board might be able to say, you know, we just want to go forward without considering incumbency at all, as we initially said, or, given how small the changes were, to make sure that the incumbents are not double bonked, that we would go forward and put out B2. So, if you're comfortable sort of making that call tonight, it would reduce the number of maps that are floating around out there from four to three, reduce the number of large maps that have to be printed up, you know, so I, I think that would be helpful.
We really want to make sure that the incumbents are not double bonked.
So, so B2, and that's the map that had the, that you have the population statistics for, right? So, I think, as, as Blake said, when, when we got the board's guidance, the option, the second option was to be compact districts, don't take anything else into account as far as incumbency. But when he put the incumbents on there and saw how easy it would be to make some minor tweaks around the edges to include incumbents, that that's the option B2. And I think if that's the sense of the board to move forward with B2 instead of the original B, then we would have Option A, Option B2, and Option C that could be out there for public review and, and for the board members to review.
And that would be, I, I don't think we would need to have more than three.
Given that the changes are so small, would we be able to?
Yeah, yeah.
Certainly someone, you know, as we have to put those maps out there, we, you all might get feedback and say, yeah.
No, we, we really, you know, don't like those changes. We don't like Option B, let's do something else. Or you all may look at it and say, you know, that's not the way we want to go. But for this initial round, I think it is helpful to let people focus on, I mean, not those small, minute changes.
If I may, Madam Chair.
Is the board comfortable with the places where we talked about potential community meetings and, and placing maps?
Do it again if you would, please.
As a place to start, we talked about North Edgcombe High School, Southwest Edgcombe High School, Tarboro High School, and then either Teacher Resource Center or one of our, one of our elementary schools in Rocky Mount, okay? And then maps at Brazewell Library, OIC, Pine Tops Library, Tarboro Library, Administrative Building with the County, and our building, our office.
What's close to the hill, the hills there area, what's over there?
OIC. OIC.
I, I don't know if a big, OIC is farther down, but you're right in that big, the thick, 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 condensed area of hills there, there. They are ways away from either one of those.
What do you have?
Metropolitan Church.
Yes, there is Metropolitan Church there.
What, what if, what if the board, if you want to make some suggestions regarding, regarding, certainly open to that, I don't think we have to be completely decided with that tonight. So, certainly, that, that's, that's a place, we wanted to, staff wanted to offer that as a place to start. And then we can certainly adjust that if we feel like we want to, we want to make, this board's been committed to transparency and total community input. So, we are open to any suggestions.
And it will be on the website as well, and so certainly those
On the website, and so people will have the ability to get that information. Thank you. If there's nothing else for us, I appreciate your attention this evening, thank you.
Well, we certainly appreciate you all. All right, we are, we thank you very much for sharing. 6.3, we are at 6.4. Dr. Brown?
So, I'll make sure my mic's on here. So, you have a, in front of you, this is a point of information, North Edgcombe High School Journalism Club submitted Donors Choose grant application. And if I may, Madam Chair, may I continue through?
Please, go right through.
You also have extended day field trips and fundraisers as well. A number of them have been outlined for you. These were approved beforehand, and are points of information for the board, if anybody has any questions.
Does anyone have any questions on 6.4 and 6.5? And 6. Here are none, we'll move to item 7, committee reports, Dr. Brown.
At our, last week, we had our Board Policy Committee with some revised policy updates. And you'll see, see the list, and there are updated policies with minor changes. That's 7.1.2. And then one new policy, which is for first reading, which is 5150, reporting to external agencies.
which is fifty-one fifty reporting to external agencies. And all of those are listed there and came through, came through committee as approved and presented.
Okay. I know we need to have a motion for the brand new part, for the first reading of the new policy, if we do not have any questions or concerns about all the other. Could we hear a motion for approval of the first reading?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I think we have a...
You have to make a motion on all of them.
Each section? Okay, I can do that. Okay, we'll look at the revised section. Does anyone have any concerns or changes on the revised policy update?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the revised policies.
Did someone say? It has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our revised policy updates. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. The motion carries. Now we need a motion for the updated policies.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve one point, one point two updated policies.
Second.
Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve the updated policies. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. The motion carries. Now we need to have a motion for the first reading of the new policy, five one fifty.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve our new policy, five one fifty, for the first reading.
Second.
Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our new policy for the first reading, fifty-one fifty. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. The motion carries. Thank you. Eight point A, our consent items, and we will only need one motion on these, and that's eight point one A.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, what you have in front of you are consent items for field trips for extended day, also fundraisers, approval, submit a federal grants entitlement, grant application to NCDPI for Title II Part A, PRC one fifteen for fifty-five thousand seven hundred forty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents. Eight point four A, approval of Stock's Elementary School to accept a monetary donation amount of ten thousand dollars from WR Long for the purpose of supporting student activities, school events, initiatives that foster an inclusive and vibrant school community and recognition of the dedicated staff. Any questions regarding consent?
Could we hear a motion to approve our consent item?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the consent items as presented.
Second.
Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our consent items as presented. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Here and none, the motion carries. We have eight point B, item for action, and that's Dr. Myra.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Do I need to turn this on? Good evening. I'm here to request Board approval for the continued authorization as, for Princeville Elementary School as a restart school. This is the time for the annual reauthorization. It's been done over three years. The school has continued to move and progress in the way that the restart model expects a school to, to do. And Princeville Elementary has met expectation and is eligible for continued authorization to operate using the restart model. And in your packet, you have some information just about the restart model as well as the data reflected through the Department of Public Instruction as well as through the Principal Mercer at Princeville Elementary School.
Does anyone have any questions?
It's been past three years. It's been past three years for them.
Yes, it has.
No tough questions on this item, eight point one B. We need to hear a motion for approval.
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of the continuation, continued authorization of the restart program for Princeville Elementary.
Second.
Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve the authorization as a restart school for Princeville Elementary. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very kindly. Dr. Bryant, eight point two B.
Eight point two B is approval of the waiver to community use facilities rental fees.
Except for the cost of custodian required to be on campus. Epsilon Sigma Lambda Chapter fraternity using JW Parker Middle School Media Center for fraternity meetings and interviews on March nine and March seventeen and March twenty-four. Times are listed as proposed.
Does anyone have any concerns on this?
I just have my regular question. No profit by the fraternity, by the use of the facilities as we know of, correct?
Knowing, knowing that I'm aware of.
It's just a meeting.
Just a meeting.
But that's my standard question, you know, somebody borrows, rents a facility regardless of who they are, even my mama.
Okay. So I'll need to hear a motion for approval on item eight point two B.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the, the approval for waiving the community use of facilities rental fees, except for the cost to the custodian required to be on campus during the event for the Epsilon Sigma Lambda Chapter fraternity using JW Parker Middle School Media Center for the fraternity meetings and interviews on March ninth from five to seven, March seventeenth, March twenty-fourth from six thirty until eight.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve the wavering, the community use of facilities fees, except for the custodian costs that's required at JW Parker Middle School. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very kindly. All right. Oh, Miss Howie, you thought we were gonna never call you, didn't you?
I started to feel like that. Good evening. Good evening. And I promise that when I get up here, I feel like I'm going to the podium of church and give me if I start to speak in that manner, but good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair of Education.
Good evening.
President. We're calling for you to...
I refer you to request the approval of budget amendment one, Ms. Freshman Hills of the audit report last month, in which they did say that budget amendments should come before you on a regular basis, so here we go. And I also offer my apologies for how small it looks. It's a lot of information this go around, so I apologize for the eye exam. But what you have in front of you is, and I'm just gonna go to the bottom line, total increase over the revised, over the, pardon me, the initial budget resolution that was approved in, I think it was August. We have an increase of twenty-three million, five hundred seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars. That's across state, pardon me, federal capital funds, special revenue. What you'll find is this is through DPI allotment revision number seventy-one as of January thirty-first, and it also is including carryover figures from last school year. Bringing our total budget again through the revision of January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five to what you'll see on the revised budget resolution, the total in the bottom right-hand corner, pardon me, as I'm saying totals, I'm looking at the total in the bottom right-hand corner on both the amendment and on the revised resolution. So I'm not going by fun. Yes, ma'am. Just, is everybody, I just wanna, because I know I might be speaking fast. Okay, so the total budget as of January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, that we're working with, that I'm requesting or recommending your approval of is ninety-six million, five hundred forty-seven thousand, five hundred ninety-three dollars, rounded, of course.
Any other questions? We need to hear a motion to approve our budget amendment number one for FY twenty-four.
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of budget amendment number one.
Second.
For the year twenty-four, twenty-five.
It has been moved and seconded that we will approve the budget amendment number one for FY twenty-four, twenty-five. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you all.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Right?
Madam Chair, I make a motion under the North Carolina Open Meetings Law, Section one forty-three dash three eighteen, twenty-eleven, A one, A three, and A six, to go into closed session to consider personnel matters, to consult with the attorney for, to preserve attorney-client privileged information, and to prevent the disclosure of student records rendered confidential under the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, twenty, USC, twelve thirty-two G, and the disclosure of personnel records rendered confidential under GS one fifteen C, three nineteen through three twenty-one.
Second.
Has been moved and properly seconded that we would go into closed session. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries, and we'll take five minutes. Five minutes.
And they can cut the air off in here. Chill in here.
Are we staying in here?
Yeah, we're staying here for closed session.
I know, I just checked.
I got Tarboro.
Okay.
So I just checked. I checked the same.
Yeah, okay.
You ready to go? Okay, thank you. We're back and open now. Item 10.1, our Personnel Management. Could we have a motion to approve our Personnel Management?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve our Personnel Management.
Second, has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Personnel Management. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you very kindly. 10.12, our Extracurricular Activities Addendum. Could we hear motion to approve?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. Now, 10.13, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.14, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.15, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.16, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.17, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.18, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.19, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.20, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.21, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.22, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.23, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.24, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.25, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.26, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.27, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.28, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.29, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.29, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.30, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.31, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.32, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.33, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.34, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.35, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.36, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.37, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.38, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.39, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.39, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.39, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.39, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.39, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.39, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.39, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.39, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.39, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.39, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.39, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities Addendum for Winter Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.39, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our Extracurricular Activities for our Spring Sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. 10.39, our Closed Session Minutes. Could we hear a motion for approval of our Clo- Regular Closed Session Minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our January 13, 2025 Regular Business Board Meeting Closed Session Minutes. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. Burke Board Correspondence? I do not have any. Okay. Item 12, any item brought for us by the Superintendent to consider?
Aye.
All right. I need a motion for adjournment.
It's all moved, Madam Chair.
Has been moved and properly seconded that we will adjourn our meeting. Any other discussion on that motion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.